Good evening, welcome to tonight's city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, November the sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Before we start, I'd like to ask everybody for a moment of silence in honor of two members of our city Madison family who passed away in the last couple of days. That would be Ms. Jean Harrell, who worked in our water department for almost four years for the city, and then the son of Barb Mainow, who works in our clerk treasurer's office. So if we could recognize them with a moment of silence. Thank you. Let's remove our hats and rise and recite the Lord's Prayer, follow by the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy name come; all will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this bread, our daily bread; give us our tax taxes, which we fear those who trust us against us. We are just like a temptation, deliver us from evil. I have the kingdom, not power, in the Lord.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. For me, we have a roll call, please.
Yes. Tevinon, here. Krebs?
Here.
Lucy DiTillo?
Here.
Rampe?
Here.
Bartlet?
Here.
And Dan DiTillo.
Council, next we'll approve the minutes for the November second, two thousand twenty-one council meeting. Are there any amendments, modifications to the minutes? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Move to approve the minutes.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Also, I'd like to welcome Mr. Barker's government class here tonight. We have a roomful of fantastic, energetic, youthful audience here, and we promise not to put you on the spot too badly later, but welcome to our city council meeting. Next, we'll introduce the, or invite our chief of police, John Wallace, to the podium, and we would like to first start out by recognizing Captain Dan Stephan of Madison Police Department.
Good evening, council, and thank you for your hospitality here on this very special occasion for the Madison Police Department. I would like to ask Captain Dan Stephan to step up front with me, if he would, please. Captain Daniel Joseph Stephan began his career with the Madison Police Department on August twenty-ninth, nineteen seventy-six. On May first, nineteen eighty-eight, DJ, as we affectionately know him, was promoted to the rank of sergeant, and then to the rank of lieutenant on June twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety-four. On July ninth, two thousand, DJ was promoted to the rank of captain, a position he held until his retirement date, November fifth, two thousand twenty-one. In nineteen ninety-seven, Captain Stephan was one of three hundred officers across America to be recognized as one of the nation's top cops. Captain Stephan's accomplishments with the Madison Police Department are many. He was a mentor, a leader, a friend, and a police officer we all should strive to be like. Earlier this summer, the city down back, it was about eleven P M., and we had this app on our, on our cell phones called Workplace, in which we share information amongst our officers. Gave the indication that I was getting a message, and it was, it was from Captain Stephan at eleven o'clock at night. Mind you, he got off at two o'clock that day. There was just a little bit of tidbit information that he wanted to pass on to all of his officers. He could have waited very easily the next day, but that's not the kind of officer Captain Stephan was. He was dedicated beyond anything I've ever seen to a department and to a city. There's a lot of examples of DJ's dedication, but that's just, that's just one of many, and he was a true cop scout. Now it's my honor to ask State Representative Randy Frye to step to the podium for a special state of Indiana presentation. Randy Frye, our state representative.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing me to come this evening and to be a part of honoring Captain Stephan. Captain, this is a, this is an award, it's called the Circle of the Cordon. I'm not sure if you've ever heard of it.
No.
It's the second highest award that an individual in Indiana can receive, and so I want to read to you what, what it says here. Circle of the Cordon, Eric J. Holcomb, Governor of Indiana, to all whom these presents may come greetings. Whereas the early leaders of our state gathered in Cordon in eighteen sixteen to adopt the Indiana Constitution and to create the state of Indiana. Whereas Cordon was Indiana's first capital and center of leadership in the early and formative years of our state. Whereas, like the founders of our great state, many others have made remarkable contributions to the betterment of Indiana and its people, and therefore are deserving of consideration for membership in the Indiana General Assembly's Circle of the Cordon. And whereas Representative Randy Frye has made known the illustrious benefactor of one Daniel J. Stephan, who has demonstrated in life and in service to the people of the state of Indiana the qualities exemplified by our state's greatest citizens. Your support, and having been deemed worthy of such recognition, the above named individual is hereby declared to be a distinguished member of the Circle of the Cordon. Signed, Eric J. Holcomb, Governor of Indiana, Randall L. Frye, State Representative.
Thank you, sir. We've got more to come, so you have such a good reason. DJ loves it when I do this. His last day, I had some of the media come in, and you could just tell he was there all with me. He's not much on drawing attention to himself, now, just the kind of guy he is. He's the guy that goes out and gets the job done and lets everybody else have the credit. Before we move on, I would like to mention that DJ's family is here with us tonight. I would ask his family to stand up, they've been supporting him for forty-five plus years, and recognize them, awesome people. Thank you, guys, for coming. You know, especially I'd like to point out Anita Stephan, DJ's wife, they serve right along with us. They feel the pain and the agony that we have day in and day out, and without the support of a, of a loving wife at home, we would never be able to do this job. So Anita, thank you so much for all the support you've given DJ in our department over the years as well. We truly appreciate it. Now I'd like to ask our mayor, Bob Courtney, please step to the podium. We have two other special awards and recognitions to give to Captain Stephan. Mayor?
This is a entry into the United States Congressional Record by Congressman Greg Pence, Thursday, November the fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Mr. Pence, Madam Speaker, I rise today to honor Captain Dan Stephan on his retirement from the Madison, Indiana Police Department following forty-five years of public service. Captain Stephan joined the Madison Police Department on August the twentieth, nineteen seventy-six. Daniel DJ Stephan rose through the ranks and was appointed captain on July the ninth, two thousand, two thousand. Captain Stephan is Madison's longest-serving merit police officer. Throughout his many years with the Madison Police Department, Captain Stephan served as a firearms instructor and won several Top Gun Awards in competition. After working forty-four city parades, Captain Stephan served as the grand marshal of this year's Madison July Fourth Parade. My friend, Chief of Police John Wallace noted that DJ's fellow M P D officers will greatly miss him. Captain Stephan is a dedicated public servant and highly regarded by all. Thank you, Captain Stephan, for your service to Madison. I wish you all the best in a well-deserved retirement, although that retirement is going to be very short because he's going to be back in uniform soon, again, working with M P D. But Captain Stephan, this is on behalf of the Honorable Greg Pence.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. As if the accolades from our state rep and congressman were enough, I'd like to put the city of Madison's touch on all this and present you with a flag that flew over the city of Madison on the date of your retirement, and present this to you, along with key to the city, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir. You're welcome.
Would you like to address your constituents here?
I'm not saying a few words, thank you. Anyway, it's been great. I've had a good role at this job. I've really enjoyed it. It has its challenges, but it also has its rewards, and I've really enjoyed it. People are great to work with, and there's nothing like it. It's one of the few jobs that you can actually look forward to going to work every day. I've never felt tired of it. It's been great.
You've been awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Class, that's one of our two heroes of City Madison, Captain Dan Stephan. Moving on, we do have several resolutions and orders.
The first one is Resolution Number two thousand twenty-one dash sixty-seven, is Resolution of the Common Council of City Madison, Indiana, transferring certain funds. Whereas the circumstances have developed since the two thousand twenty-one annual budget adoption, it is now necessary to transfer certain funds from the original appropriations. Now therefore be resolved by the Common Council of City Madison, Indiana, that the following certain funds are transferred within the city within accounting tax account, and that is eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty cents from building and structure to land acquisition. A foregoing resolution was passed and adopted by the Common Council of City Madison at a regular meeting on the sixteenth of November, two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you. This is part of our year cleanup process, just trying to make sure that none of our contracts have negative balances. This was in relation to the purchase of the Bridge Approach property on the east side of the bridge. There were, the day of closing, you know, we, we were wiring funds, and there was a little bit of an additional funds, so it threw it into the negative by eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars, so I was transferring that over to make sure that we are squared up there.
Do you think we can motion in a second? I move we accept the resolution as stated.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Chatham?
Yes.
Rampe?
Yes.
Krebs?
Yes.
Tevinon?
Yes.
And the next one is Resolution Number two thousand twenty-one dash sixty-eight, and I will not do the formal reading because it's essentially the exact same thing. It's transferring funds from Lit Public Safety, two thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventeen cents, to the general police overtime, amount of two thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventeen cents. That's Resolution Number two thousand twenty-one dash sixty-eight.
Thank you. This one is also, I believe, the expense was put toward the regular overtime account for police not realizing that we had moved that overtime into our Lit Public Safety fund. So we're just correcting that to make sure that everything is kept to see.
You can have a motion in a second?
I move to approve Resolution Number two thousand twenty-one dash sixty-eight, as presented.
I'll second. Roll call?
Rampe?
Yes.
Lucy DiTillo?
Yes.
Krebs?
Yes.
Tevinon?
Yes.
Chatham?
Yes.
The next one is Resolution Number two thousand twenty-one dash sixty-nine, Resolution of the Common Council of City Madison, Indiana, concerning authorization for execution of N dot agreements. Whereas Indiana Code, Chapter thirty-six dash one dash three, permits any unit in the state of Indiana to exercise any power to perform any function necessary to the public interest in the context of its governmental or internal affairs, which is not prohibited by the Constitution of the United States or the state of Indiana, or denied or preempted by any other law, or is expressly, is not expressly granted in any other law or any other governmental entity. Whereas the Common Council of City Madison, Indiana, its legislative and executive body of the city of Madison, Indiana, and is by law authorized to adopt ordinances or resolutions for the administration of the city of Madison, Indiana, legal and financial affairs. Whereas the Indiana Department of Transportation has requested specific writing authority for the execution of N dot agreement when all members of the executive body do not sign. Now therefore be resolved by the Common Council of City Madison, Indiana, as follows. Alt. one number one, authorization. The mayor is hereby authorized and confirmed to have the authority to execute any N dot agreements and all other documents related thereto, and all documents related to any N dot grant programs for and on behalf of and to buy the city of Madison, Indiana. The Common Council of Madison, Indiana hereby ratifies all prior agreements and associated documents executed by the mayor for the city of Madison, Indiana, prior to the effective date of this resolution. The foregoing resolution was passed and adopted by the Common Council of City Madison, Indiana, as a regular meeting held on November sixteenth, two thousand twenty.
Thank you, sir. This was actually at the request of N dot, and this is a template piece for them that they are recommending. So they are moving to an electronic signature format for all contracts, which is actually a really great thing for us, because it used to be several copies mailed to an address and all the time that it takes back and forth getting those doc, uh, documents signed. So they're moving to an all electronic signature format, which will be really convenient for us, but we will not be able to request contracts until they have a document that tells them who will be our signer for contracts. It is already the mayor on all of these contracts anyway. It has to be someone legally, in, that has the ability to obligate the city financially, so that would be the clerk treasurer or the mayor, and we always have the mayor sign these contracts anyway. It will just make the process a little better, easier, and faster, so.
Frankly, when we, oftentimes when we get these grant agreements and different things like that, we are supposed to, and I say we, the council, I should remind you that you should authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the city, and sometimes it doesn't happen, and so this will clean that up, and we don't have to worry about that.
Thank you.
So we'll take a motion in a second.
I move to approve Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash sixty-nine, as presented.
I'll second.
Roll call, please?
Oh, is there any discussion?
When it, when it refers to any N dot agreements, but just generally, what would have to be the effect of?
Generally speaking, it would be if we had a N dot grant agreement, the C C M G grant would be one, the community crossings grant, things like that. Now, and I guess to be clear, this doesn't authorize the mayor to enter into those agreements.
Correct.
The council has to give approval first, but this just authorizes the mayor to sign on behalf of the council, once the council takes actions, or board of public boards.
Like yesterday at Board of Public Works, we had a, N dot is doing a stormwater project near Ferry Street and, and Highway fifty-six. We'd already agreed to sell them right away for the stormwater project. Now there's the cost associated with stormwater project, and we agreed to share a small portion in that cost. The cost of the actual project was sixty thousand. Our share was seventy-five hundred dollars. That comes out of our utility department, but that was an agreement, for example, that was in Board of Public Works yesterday that they authorized me to execute.
And you'll remember that whenever I apply for, you know, twice a year I can apply for the community crossings matching grant for our roads projects, and I always come to council, and, because you have to approve that we have the money to make the match. So that's part of the process, and then, of course, into the, the contract sign.
Any other comments or questions? Anything from the audience? Very good. Roll call, please?
Yes. Lucy DiTillo?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Tevinon?
Yes.
Krebs?
Yes.
Chatham?
Yes.
Rampe?
Yes. Thank you, council.
We have ordinance on first reading, it's ordinance number two thousand twenty-one dash nineteen, an ordinance of the Common Council of City Madison, Indiana, amending certain portions of the City of Madison Port Authority ordinance as found in Chapter thirty-three of the City of Madison Municipal Code. Whereas the City of Madison previously adopted an ordinance establishing the City of Madison Port Authority, it now finds it necessary to amend such ordinance. And whereas the City of Madison desires to amend the City of Madison Port Authority ordinance nineteen seventy-eight dash twenty-three, Section A, as codified in number thirty-three point zero nine six. And whereas the City of Madison seeks to reduce the port authority directors from nine to seven, it hereby adopts the following. Now therefore be ordained by the Common Council of City Madison, Indiana, that the port authority ordinance previously enacted be amended to amend ordinance number nineteen seventy-eight dash three, Section A, as codified as number thirty-three point zero nine six, to reflect as follows. The port authority shall be governed by a board of directors consisting of seven, which is where the change is, it's now proposed to be seven instead of nine, who shall be adopted by the mayor with the advice and consent of the common council. Each director shall have, shall have been qualified, elected to the city for a period of at least three years preceding his, his appointment. The directors of the authority first appointed shall serve staggered terms. Thereafter, each successor shall serve a term of four years, except that any person appointed to fill the vacancy shall be appointed to complete only the unexpired term, and the director shall be eligible for reappointment. The mayor may, after time, remove a director appointed by him for misfeasance, nonfeasance, or malfeasance in office. But again, the only substantive change is the number of directors from now to seven. So that will be on the agenda next time for second reading.
And I'll just mention to Mr. Barker's class that ordinances require three readings, so you can come back for the next two meetings and see what happens, okay? All right, moving on. Council, are there any reports, recommendations, recommendations around the business from standing or selected in the state committees of the city council? Any board appointments? We have two meetings left after this one, and there are several appointments across, you know, our two dozen or so boards that we'll need to consider and work together on by the end of the year.
We'll be planning an executive session before the end of the year in order to discuss board appointments.
Okay. Moving on to reports of city officials, I'll just invite Deputy Mayor McGee to give us an update on roads. Chant, please, C C M G.
Okay. A quick update on the current road project that we're doing. I believe we're almost done. I'm not going to say it, but I believe we're almost done. They were finishing up Mastic on Headover Hill yesterday, and I think maybe today. They had, I didn't bring my numbers with me, I think they had twelve arrows left to paint and two crosswalks left to do yesterday. I didn't check in with Kenny today to find out where we are, but I, they were going to be done either yesterday or today, so fingers crossed that all happened and for whether, you know, equipment stayed in working order, so hopefully at our next meeting I can, we can celebrate that that is done. So, on to the next project. We applied for the fall application, fall twenty-one application for community crossings, and we're awarded everything that we asked for. So we applied for nine hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars, and we're awarded all of that. That will give us about a one point eight million dollar project to complete, and I, this project, I want to give you a lot more details on in terms of what it will do for this neighborhood, but what we did is, we looked at this a little differently than what we have done for road paving projects in the past. This one was clearly for Main Street, and it needed to happen prior to that. Our road projects were what I would call spot paving. We'd pick a road that needed to be paved and do that, but the beauty of the community crossing grant program is that if you're painting a street, you could do sidewalk work, concrete work, you could do curbs, gutters, all of that. So if you appropriate your money correctly and focus it correctly, you can do yard-to-yard transformations. So what we did is, I'm sure where we ordered the sidewalk study, to find out what, where our worst sidewalks are and rank them specifically, exactly the way we do streets, from one to ten, ten being a new sidewalk, one being grass. So what I did was overlay the sidewalk rating spreadsheet with the road ratings spreadsheet that we update every year, and matched up the lowest numbers, just to see if we had a specific area that needs everything. And for this round, there was one that needed it, and it was basically the entire neighborhood of Oak Hill, which was, is, is a wonderful neighborhood, the layout is, is a wonderful concept, but it's been neglected for a very long time. So this project will allow us to pave every road, fix every sidewalk, including putting new sidewalks in where there aren't any now around the park. It's not complete. They will have all new curbs, gutters, and driveway approaches, and all of their ramps will be ADA compliant. So essentially, brand-new neighborhood from an infrastruc, infrastructure standpoint, and then their park is going to get put in our park plan. So it's one of those unique neighborhoods that is built around a park, which I think is a great idea, so really should be transformational for that neighborhood. I'm very excited about the project, and I think it will be a very good thing for the folks that live up there. Unfortunately, for those of you who aren't the councilman for that district, it means there's not any paving in this project for you, but we can apply twice a year for C C M G. Next year, we'll have two chances to apply, assuming we have the match funds for it, and we'll, we'll look at it this angle, we'll find out where the worst needs are, and we'll try to make the most efficient use of the funds, because we can do that work for basically fifty cents on the dollar with the state's help.
I actually want to add to that, which is, you know, being scientific about how we prioritize our resources as a board of us, which is why we, we did the sidewalk study and also incorporated a rating system in it. Like, we've not, we've not had that before, but we've used it for roads. But if you look across the area, just in the last two and a half years, county N dots investment on the East End Bridge Approach, we've, we've performed or done about twenty million dollars of roadwork in the city of Madison over the course of the last two to two and a half years. And as Mindy indicated, the C C, C C M G grant is fantastic for us, because it really puts us on a level, it almost gives us an advantage over larger communities, because a million dollars is the max, whether you live in Indianapolis or you live in Madison, Indiana. The only difference is how much you pay for your match. For example, Jefferson County also received a million dollars of C C M G work to do their roadwork. Their match is twenty-five percent, so their dollars are going to go a little bit further. Our match is fifty percent, because of the size of the city of Madison. But relative to other larger communities, we're actually getting a lot of infrastructure investment, and then on top of that, we've already received the five million dollar federal highway grant that will be receiving in our summer of two thousand twenty-five, which is the two thousand twenty-six fiscal year. So a lot of infrastructure investment is happening across the community, and this is a way to really make an impact rather than, you know, doing it kind of street by street, or like what we've been doing with sidewalks, house by house. Our sidewalk strategy has turned into a, let's do an entire block, because rarely do you have only one bad sidewalk in a block. It's a whole block, so what we've, what we've been able to do now is look at entire blocks that will make a very, a big difference, particularly for pedestrians in the sidewalk realm, rather than just a house here and a house there, so.
I would also add that we're also, we have a little bit of time, so we're going into the contract process right now. The, the resolution you just approved is a part of that process, and we'll request the contract, and we'll go through that. So we'll probably, we'll get the advertisements out for bid in the next month or so, and then we'll, we'll let the project and we'll award the bid in the spring. So it will be a spring project. We're hoping to get on the contractor's schedule early, so that we're top priority. so that we're top priority and they get there. And that, that's the other thing, is think about for a contractor, being able to take all their equipment to one neighborhood and use it, and they're not dragging it all over town and running into whatever issues they, they do as they're trying to do that. So I think that's another good reason to do it this way. But we're also, it gives us time to work with our utility company and take a look at the underground infrastructure while we're going up the street, and find out what needs to be replaced, and get that taken care of before we repaint the street.
Any questions for Mindy? Good job on all the grant applications and the road management, street management crew is fantastic too, Laura.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have no bills on third reading or second reading, so now one of my favorite parts of the meeting is public comments. Also would invite Mr. Bargers' class, if there's any of you that have questions about tonight, or, you know, how the city works, we'll happy to answer any questions or any observation you might have, we'll invite you to the podium, or anybody else would like to address the mayor's office or city council. I know, Neil, you want to, you really do. Anyone else? We're grateful you guys are here. Uh, moving on to mayor's comments, got a few things I'd like to update you on. We had the first preview of our downtown parking study today, which was really interesting and, and a lot of data relative to what our supply and demand is for the corridor, that we feel is a lot of business as well as tourism. We should have that final report by the end of the year, but between now and the end of the year, we'll start digesting some of the data that was revealed to us about, about our parking needs, as well as our parking supply, and try to reconcile what we do from a policy or an investment perspective. I was really happy, honestly, with, with the engineers who presented the question to us. I mentioned we have two council meetings yet, or left for the year, so we still have a lot of work to do coordination-wise. Uh, Clark, can we give an update on the budget?
Um, sorry about that. The only thing I've got to add, I think I gave a report on the seventeen eighty-two notice, and we did receive that, came a little earlier this year than normal, but as far as we can tell, everything that we have put in the budget has been approved. So that's good news, and we'll probably sign off on that and send it to them probably, probably tomorrow. So that's good news, and appreciate all you guys' hard work on the budget, and the mayors and Mindys and everybody else, so anyway.
It's great to put that in there and focus on, focus on implementing, you know, strategies and initiatives and working with that budget. I'll mention a couple of other things. We continue to work every day on flood risk mitigation. We had a meeting with Corps of Engineers today and gave them a, a tour of all of the affected areas, so they could really start the survey process, which, as I've indicated before, is gonna be really comprehensive, but it will take a year, most likely, for them to complete their work. While, while they are doing the survey of the area, we're also working with other governmental entities in order to implement what we think are short-term strategies that will make a huge impact with Department of Natural Resources and NDOT, for example. We also, through Board of Public Works yesterday, approved a contract for vegetation remediation that hasn't been done in fifteen years. And so because it's an expensive and very labor-intensive effort, the area between West Jefferson and West Street will be our priority. That's the area where we, it's the narrowest part of the channel, where we have the most vegetation overgrowth, that has created the most barrier to a, a good flow of, of the, of the watershed, particularly in a storm event. So that is, that is happening. We're also inspecting other culverts, which have also become very overgrown. So we've got a maintenance process we have to implement, but initially, we have to spend a lot of time in getting the overgrowth out of there. That's been accumulating for about fifteen years, but that, that process is, is underway. They'll begin work on that, I believe, by mid-December, and it'll probably take about a month for that effort to, 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 to be finished. We are continuing to work on our Jefferson County City of Madison Clean Drinking Water Initiative. We're very close to finalizing a rate study, which then we'll present to council. We are continuing to work with and ask for assistance from the Jefferson County Commissioners. I would still encourage each of you to reach out to the City of Madison representative among the board commissioners, that would be Commissioner Little, and ask him to support our request for financial assistance to reduce the cost of that fifteen million dollar project, and their investment will help us reduce the rates and the overall impact to not only the City of Madison, but the City of Madison provides drink, clean drinking water, seventy-five percent of Jefferson County. So it'll have an impact in Dupont and Rikers Ridge and Canaan, and the City of Madison, and all the areas in between. There is a vaccine mandate that is looming that will affect the City of Madison. We think that that will have a harmful impact on our labor force. It is making its way through the court system now, but depending upon how that plays out, implementation deadline for that will be January the fourth, so we are starting the planning and review of the OSHA requirements for that mandate, while that works its way through court systems. Governor Holcomb and Attorney General Raketa also oppose a vaccine mandate because of the impact it's gonna have across our community and our workforce, as, as many of our industries are also concerned. So we'll keep you posted on that, but the threshold is a hundred employees. City Madison right now has approximately, we fluctuate between a hundred and seven and a hundred and ten full-time employees. That grows substantially during the summer, but that would put us in the threshold for needing to implement the vaccine mandate or mitigants in lieu of, of a vaccination. We're working on that. There was also an infrastructure bill President Biden signed into law on Monday. We have not received a whole lot of information on what that will do for the City of Madison, but it's estimated that that infrastructure bill will generate between eight and nine billion dollars of funding for the state of Indiana. That will be spread across quite a few different categories, broadband, bridges, roads, EV chargers, autonomous vehicles. And we'll continue to stay aggressive at that, so that we can see what opportunities City of Madison will have to receive additional infrastructure dollars. Our infrastructure needs are very significant. When you look at water and roads, and particularly stormwater, our stormwater management issues are very significant, and it could cost millions of dollars to, to mitigate. That's why we're spending so much time on doing the planning, in order to identify what, what ways we can implement that will reduce the future flood risk of flash, flash lighting in particular, and the North Wall Street corridor that's been affected twice in six years, that's caused millions of dollars of damage, so we're continuing to work on that. But we're, we're hopeful that some of these infrastructure dollars will generate some stormwater infrastructure money for us for needs that we will identify over the course of the next year. And then lastly, I'll mention that, as you know, we've talked about this a few times, the ready grant process is fully underway, and City of Madison participating in the presentation to IEDC on December third for the Southern Indiana Regional Development Authority's grant proposal. The, the grant request is approximately eighty-five million dollars. City of Madison would share a portion of that for our Destination Madison Development Plan that we put in place. And we had two plans, one was Destination Madison, the other one was a workforce development plan. Both are fantastic economic development initiatives that will essentially create a roadmap for us over the course of the next three years, so lots going on, and I'll pause there, answer any questions Joel might have. Questions from, sir?
Rick Roots, fourteen twenty-one Cherokee Court. Just a question about the OSHA mandates. I mean, are you, I mean, I'm, 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 I'm,[1284.91]
There's been over five thousand positive COVID cases across Jefferson County, so you could probably be dubbed at approximately five thousand out of thirty-three thousand people would have natural immunity if it's extended, depending upon how long they, it's been since they've had COVID.
And another thing that'd be interesting to track is how many people have been double-dosed and then yet contracted COVID.
Do not know the level of breakout cases, but we do know that relative to the severe cases that require hospitalization, over ninety percent of them were unvaccinated. You're welcome. Definitely something we need to monitor and everybody needs to make a conscious decision for their own health and safety. Relative to mandate, as, as said, we'll, we'll continue to look at what the planning is required when we want to enact anything until, until the mandate courses through the courts. Anything else? Counsel, thank you.
If there is nothing else, we'll, we'll wish to adjourn. So, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, we have somebody in back there. Bob, would you like to come up to address the council? I didn't see you come in.
Oh, I, I delayed. I was up till four AM with a sick computer. So I apologize. I'm Bob Hartsaw, with it, eight oh six West Second Street. And one of the sad things about the sick and now dead computer is I wanted to prepare a little chart for you. Before I go into that, let me say, thank all of you. We've seen a decrease in crime. Good job, I think that was your number one issue. I use our new bike trail on Main Street almost every day if the weather is nice, so thank you for that. But what I'd like to talk about is the, or asked about, or have you to think about, is the upcoming water issue and even more so what that combined bill means. Now, I'm blessed, I live well, but about sixteen to twenty-three percent of our community, I never could find a good real number, a single-family household. Many of those are living off social security of money or in some cases supplemental security income, which is less than a thousand dollars a month. Typical bill, and I'll get to the water point, a typical bill, minimum usage of water is two thousand gallons. A single-family house, a single-family household uses less than half of that. And yet we have a minimum charge for the two thousand gallons. We have a sewer bill that's based off three thousand gallons of water usage. We have sanitation that's based off eight bags of trash a morning. Now, I know some time ago we spoke about that and the city found a way to not raise the trash bill. But for a single-family household, that's somewhere between half a bag and one bag of trash a week. So that nine dollars and eighty-five cents should be half for that single-family household. I'm concerned not about me, but about those who are struggling to live off those low income levels. As I add all that up and correct for a thousand gallons of water usage, when I correct for a thousand gallons of sewer usage and when I correct for four bags of trash in a month, we are charging these people at least seventeen dollars more per month. May not sound like a lot, I'll pay whatever it is, but that's double what it should, what, what they're paying is double what it should be. So by these back-of-the-envelope calculations, that's seventeen eighty-nine, which is a fair amount just based on usage, is forty dollars and thirty-eight cents. That's significant to some people. Let me add and go on to the water issue and I, that's a tough one. It's going to cost us a lot of money. The only way to recoup that money appears to be to raise those rates. It has to be done, there's no question about that. But please consider the overall impact of this total bill. There are some fairly easy solutions. We have the infrastructure to run water by a hundred gallons. Our meters are that accurate. It's a little bit of accounting trouble. There is the issue of the fixed cost versus the variable cost. Most of these structures are fixed costs, but spreading that outward, I believe, is difficult. As we come up on the sewer problems, and Mayor mentioned earlier, we're going to end up replacing a large number of our sewer systems in this town. Based off of per gallon usage, which is commonly done, that could lead to some pretty monstrous increases a year from now or two years from now. Maybe there are other ways to measure that usage. Maybe that's based off a street footage. It costs a lot more to run sewer to a house that sits out by itself or with a few other houses nearby than to run down one block of Second Street where there are sixteen houses in five. So maybe a lot front-end should be a good basis for that, but please consider that. I want you to consider this total bill when you think about and struggle with and come to a solution, which you will, for the water issue. In addition, my understanding is there are some problems between the county and the city on contributing to some of this fixed cost for the upcoming water increase. Well, half of us in the county live in basically the city of Madison, we pay county taxes too. We're paying city taxes and making a major contribution. It would be fair for the county to make a fair contribution to that. So I'm sorry, I hate to take your time, I feel pretty strongly about this, or I wouldn't be here speaking now. There were several people thought about coming down and I said, no, I said, no. Just talk to these folks and hey, there's some things to think about as you go through the process. If you would think about those things, consider that. I would appreciate it on behalf of several other folks. Thank you, any questions, problems?
I'd like to thank you for stepping forward and presenting us with some alternative ideas. And in return, I too would like to ask you, as well as your residents who are mentioning, and the citizens of the city of Madison as well as the county, to reach out to their county commissioners to encourage their participation and increase funding for this water project.
Yeah, I will, I will do that to people I know, but I don't understand what all the issues are there, but there are issues, but please do consider that that's just one part of this.
Sure, and their ability to contribute to that as well will greatly reduce the, the potential increases that will be coming.
I'm expecting margins myself and I, I wish there were more talk about ballpark numbers for that. I've done back-of-the-envelope calculations, I've mentioned them to a few people. I won't mention a few because they are fairly large.
Sure, and their contribution could greatly reduce the amount that increases. So it's, I'm sure it's been difficult to project what that will be without a definitive answer from our county commissioners and the amount that will be contributed.
Well, keep working, keep working, it's a difficult job. I thought about it once, but no thank you, but thank you for participating and doing those sensitive. There's no right answer, you know, there are only better alternatives. And but please, please do consider that. Now, thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thanks for being with us.
Thank you, Bob. So we'll make a couple of comments on, thank, thanking Bob, obviously, for, uh, we, you know, we share the back fence, so we, we talk a lot, uh, at the alley. But here's a, here's just a little tidbit about Madison Water by the Numbers. We produce and treat and distribute over eight hundred million gallons of water a year. This is coming from the little city of Madison. We provide, we provide water to approximately seventy-five percent of Jefferson County. Costs over eight million dollars a year to operate our utility company just to achieve something that's close to break even. This water project's going to cost about fifteen million dollars. We haven't invested in clean drinking water since two, two, for twenty years, so a little over, since two thousand and, two thousand and one. It's been two thousand and eight since we've addressed the rates. On the sewer front, we're in good shape there because the city of Madison, uh, over a multi-multi-year period, was under an agreement with IEDM for a long-term, long-term control agreement to really separate our stormwater from our sewer. That, that prompted us to do a lot of new stormwater, I'm sorry, sewer water work. I think we're in good shape there. We are really lagging behind in our investment for stormwater. No plan, no policy, no money, very reactive, no strategy. We see what the outcomes of that can be, in the case of very poor drainage and, and flooding. And then on the drinking water front, we need to invest in our treatment store and the distribution systems in order to make sure we don't have a failure of a system in the future. Right now, there are four tiers of pricing based upon usage and we're very closely examining all four of those tiers. And it's, it's complicated, which is why it takes a lot of time. There's a lot of regulation, there's a lot of consultant work in it, there's a lot of financial analysis. There is, um, there is, uh, you know, also, uh, what's the impact on, on our residents? And we're trying to minimize that. So we are looking at all of that and looking at all four of the tiers. One area we are definitely evaluating is the top tier because right now, the, as, as in many instances, you use more water, you pay less. But currently, DuPont, Rikers Ridge and Canaan Water Companies that buy their water from us to distribute to their rural customers pay on average forty percent less than a residential water user does in City Madison. It's a volume-based discount, but it's very, very significant. Now, that also affects our businesses that are, are large water consumers. So, so we have to look at this really carefully because it's going to affect, affect all four of those tiers. It's going to affect business, it's going to affect our City Madison users and those who get their water from the other three rural water companies. But we're doing the best we can and we'll have some recommendations, uh, in the next, in the next couple of weeks.
There's nothing else? I can, I just have one thing real quick, uh, just to repeat what the mayor said at the beginning of the meeting. My accounts payable clerk Barb Mano lost her sign Sunday morning. And I think we'd all agree that there's nothing harder than a parent losing their child. So I just want to recognize Barb. I came in Monday morning and there she was. And I told her, she said, Barb, you don't have to come in. And she said, well, I've got some things I gotta do and it gets my mind off of it. And during the course of the morning, there was lots of hugs and tears and things like that. And she said to me, I just don't want people to think that I don't care for my son because I'm here, but it just gets my mind off of it. So she was there Monday and she was there at the end of the day, working. And she came up to me toward the end of the day and she said, Rick, I probably won't be here tomorrow because it's Derek's funeral. And I said, Barb, you can have that time off. But I just want to recognize her, uh, for her dedication and, uh, her hard work. She's been with me for six years and also want to mention her husband Randy. He's a friend of mine, I know it's really hard, hard for him. But just want to recognize her for what a great employee she is, how dedicated she is. And I've known her all my life, tremendous person, tremendous mother. And, you know, I'm really hurt for her now and will continue to hurt for her, but I just want to recognize her. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seven. Seven.